Operation legislators back in session. The time is seven thirty-two. Speaker Frank Blas here, recognized on Bill seventy-six dash thirty-eight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and good evening. As Speaker, I move to place Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-eight COR as amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs introduced by myself, Frank F. Blas, Jr., and Senator Sabrina Salas Matanani, which is an act to add a new subsection two-one-zero-four-point-one to Article One, Part One, Chapter Two, Title Twenty Guam Code annotated relative to emergency care immunity from liability into the third reading, and I'd like to discuss it, please.
You can continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, what this legislation basically proposes is it provides immunity, protection from liability for primarily those individuals that provide, render emergency medical assistance in good faith, but also in the performance of their duties and responsibilities, notably, most notably, the paramedics and the medics that we have in the Guam Fire Department. In a passing conversation I once had with Fire Chief Joyce and Nicholas, I had asked in passing, I said, you know, does the Good Samaritan law, as it is commonly known, provide the protections, provide the coverages from liability for the medics and the paramedics and the EMTs? And his answer was no, that only in specific cases, but it doesn't, can it provide the protections, but in most general, in most cases, it doesn't. So what the bill proposes is it ensures that people who provide emergency care in good faith and basically without extra compensation or extra compensation other than what they're getting paid for, whether at the scene of an accident, during transport to a medical facility from a scene, or in urgent medical situations, that they are not held liable for civil damages. This also includes any of the bystanders who help at a scene of a fire, crash, or life-threatening event, to healthcare providers who assist a woman in active labor without access to her medical records, and individuals certified in CPR or defibrillation who respond during crisis. These protections will provide individuals to be able to act quickly and compassionately without fear of legal consequences. And again, this legislation is to provide those protections that are necessary, that are needed, so that our emergency medical responders and those individuals who can provide emergency medical assistance in times of crisis, in times of emergencies, don't have to fear that they could be susceptible to a civil lawsuit. So with that, Mr. Chair, I want to thank the chairwoman and the chair of the committee, Oversight Committee, for actually helping and assisting me in being able to do the diligence in this, being able to answer the questions, and to tighten up the bill so that it provides those legal protections to our emergency first responders. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Anyone like to speak on the motion on Bill seventy-six dash thirty-eight? Any member? There being none, Senator, Senator Tidaway, you're recognized.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to stand and support this measure. I think we all know that Good Samaritans are one of the best people to run into when you're in time of trouble to help you out, and some of them don't even think twice, you know, to lend a hand in a situation where there's an emergency. You know, Guam has an existing, actually, Good Samaritan protection, but they are more limited in scope. So previous laws exempt individuals from liability when rendering emergency assistance, but they did not exemplify cover EMTs and CPR-trained individuals or emergency obstacle care. So this bill clarifies and expands those protections. You know, across the U.S., similar laws exist to ensure that people feel safe stepping in into helping during someone's life-threatening situation. For example, California provides immunity for emergency medical aid and AED, automatic external defibrillator use, but assistance must be given without the expectation of compensation. In California, and in Florida, covers both layman person and healthcare providers as well. That's in Florida, but only for actions within reasonable care for Florida. New York protects aid given to both medical and non-medical emergencies. Texas offers broad immunity to lay rescuers, specifically covering AED use in emergencies. Minnesota, Louisiana, Rhode Island, and Vermont have failure-to-act laws, meaning bystanders have a legal duty, legal duty, to offer emergency help. So this bill would likely reduce hesitation for bystanders and encourage them to get involved and provide the help if they need help by witnessing any emergency. The bill would protect medical personnel, trained individuals, while they provide aid in critical situations. It also takes away the risk of unnecessary legal consequences that may come as a result of helping people helping others. The only concern I do have on this is the definition of good faith. And this is the part where, you know, because I tried to look in the committee report to see if there's anything from the legal perspective on the definition of good faith in a legal perspective. So I'm asked if I can ask the author of the legislation?
The author, you?
Yes, I can, and you yield to that question. Basically, the definition, basic definition of good faith is, and it is, while the antonym to the definition is actually found in Section B of Section One, it's basically, good faith is the absence of gross negligence, and you have the ability, and it is the ability to be able to provide and render the service that you have been trained to be able to provide. And so you're doing this in good faith, in most, in a lot of cases, without compensation. It's not a matter of not wanting, it's the individual hesitating or not wanting to do anything until they find out that he's going to get compensated, that he does that. Good faith is absent that, basically, that thought process and the gross negligence. I hope that answers the question.
Does that answer your question, Senator?
Yes, it does. So I appreciate the response from the good author of this legislation. I just don't want to see us fall into a situation where, you know, it's good faith, the meaning and definition, if not being codified on what it means, may cause some legal issues. So other than that, and then my other question was, did they seek any assistance from the Attorney General or the courts to determine the definition of good faith?
You to that question?
Yes, I have, and actually, it is recognized and is identified for other statutes within the Guam Code annotated as to what good faith is, and that I had the question, and thank you for the question, because there was that, I anticipated that question was going to come up, and so there has been consultation with the courts through the Criminal Law Review Commission, as well as with the AG's office.
That answer your question, Senator?
Absolutely, and that should bring some comfort to my other colleagues to know that that definition is clear in other laws. So thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Goomtato, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to share my thoughts on Bill seventy-six. This bill does provide Good Samaritans or individuals who possess basic life-saving skills with that legal protection they should have, particularly when they step up to help their fellow citizens requiring medical assistance and where an ambulance is ten to twenty minutes away, or the nearest ER is two or three villages away. I think we've all, and our families, have experienced this. Mr. Speaker, on the issue of government-initiated legal protections, specifically immunity from liability, decision-makers, including many in this room, have in the past put forward policy proposals or have considered them for the most part. Similar to proposed legislation in other U.S. jurisdictions, Mr. Speaker, the Emergency Opioid Antagonist Access Bystander Program provides that a person authorized to possess, obtain, store, administer, or dispense the drug Narcan, for example, acting in good faith and with reasonable care, would be immune from criminal and civil liability, is not subject to professional disciplinary action for possessing or providing to another person Narcan in accordance with Guam law. Just wanted to note that a measure was filed during the thirty-fifth Guam legislature proposing that during a state of a public health emergency, any essential business, private sector entity, public sector entity, or personnel identified by executive order or directive from the public health authority shall not be held civilly liable for causing the death of or injury to any person or damage to any property except in the event of gross negligence or willful misconduct. With that said, Mr. Speaker, this branch of government is taking another step forward in our collective efforts to recognize and protect our citizens who put their lives at risk when providing critical care and assistance to others during an emergency. Bill seventy-six, Mr. Speaker, is good policy. It supports the safety and health of our citizens, and it establishes the necessary legal protections for those who make the honorable and arguably life-saving decision to help others when it matters the most. And I want to thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to register these brief remarks in support of Bill seventy-six, and I want to thank Speaker Blas for offering up this important measure to the people of Guam. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, anyone else wish to speak? There being none? Senator Blas, you wish to close? Senator Calvo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise today in full support of Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-eight, legislation that proposes to enact civil immunity protections for individuals and EMS providers who render emergency care in good faith when seconds truly matter. This bill seeks to encourage prompt, life-saving interventions by removing the fear of legal liability for well-intentioned bystanders and healthcare personnel who act reasonably in emergency situations. We have heard from Director Theresa Yola of DPHSS that this legislation is crucial to ensure no one hesitates to assist due to concerns over repercussions. Importantly, the bill does not protect reckless or malicious behavior, only those who act with care and integrity. It strikes the right balance, encouraging aid, protecting the public, and safeguarding Good Samaritans and professionals alike. In emergencies, hesitation can cost lives. This bill sends a clear message: We trust our island community to step in, to help, and to act without delay. Let us support a legal framework that reflects the spirit of compassion and civic duty our people embody. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of Bill number seventy-six dash thirty-eight. Let us bring this crucial safeguard into law to protect both our island's residents in peril and those who step forward to help them. I commend the author of the bill, Speaker Frank Blas, Jr., and I would like to ask if I be added as his co-sponsor. Thanks, Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Any other member wish to speak? Senator Barnett, you're recognized on the main motion.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, I actually just had a question for the author, but I wasn't sure if he covered it in his open, but if I could just pose the question, were the concerns cited by Public Health factored into the markup and the version of the bill that we have here on the floor? And I think their concerns, they were worried that it would lower the standard of care, among other issues.
Senator Blas, you?
I appreciate, and yes, I yield to the question, I appreciate the question, as a matter of fact, and in consultation and discussion with the Department of Public Health and Social Services, first off, you look at the bill, a lot of the certifications, if you will, are dependent and are basically governed and regulated by a section within the Department of Health and then Social Services. With regards to the standard of care, you know, one of the things that we need to be able to look at is basically, a lot of the events that we refer to that is going to protect this is in the area of emergency medical services, emergency medical technicians, and emergency medical transport, which has a review, peer review, and a review of the processes and procedures that are in place to be able to strengthen, if you will, you know, the current regulations, the current procedures, policies that they have in place. So that, with regards to any reduction of the standard of care, that's not what this, because there, again, it has to be, you know, it'll cover you so long as you're doing this in good faith, and basically, in the process, and in most cases, you've been trained to be able to do it already, okay, to be able to provide the services, gives you, give you those protections, which doesn't reduce the standard of care.
Does that answer your question, Senator Barnett?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, yes, it does. I wanted to ask further, because I know in testimony provided by Chief Darren Burrier of the Guam Fire Department, he had cited existing statute twenty-GCA, Chapter Two, Subsection Twenty-One-O-four, persons rendering emergency assistance exempt from civil liability. Any person who renders emergency care assistance without compensation at the place or an emergency or accident shall not be liable for any civil damages regarding his acts or omissions, except for such damages as may result from gross negligence or wanton omissions. And then in the chief's conclusion of his testimony, he writes, "The Guam Fire Department EMTs are already protected on or off duty by local laws, SOPs, and EMS protocols, et cetera." So I wanted to ask the author, just for the benefit of the viewing public, if he first thinks the measure is redundant, and if not, how is it different from the existing statutes on the books?
No, there, thank you, and I do yield to the question. There is a current statute, this is an expansion of that current statute that exists, and granted that there are certain situations where the protections are provided, but let me give you one instance where it's actually very silent, and we're here in this legislation, we're actually putting that it is covered, is in the area of transport and the provision of medical care in the process of transport. Most of the, I mean, the Good Samaritan law basically provides that when you're rendering medical assistance or emergency medical assistance at a scene is when the events, you have the coverage, but getting from there to a clinic, to a doctor's office, to a hospital, where you're continuing to provide that service, it gets away from the scene and is now in motion, transport. And what this provides as well is that protection that is specific, and it spells out to include transport, and that you'll find that on page two, line twenty-three, as well. And there is, they have the protections at the scene, but anything else outside of the scene and not recognized, rendered a scene, they don't, they don't have that protection. And the protection is basically, the law was, when the law was first passed, it didn't take into account now the advanced life-saving techniques that are available to our first responders. And so it helps to identify, because now you don't have EMS, you have EMT, you have transport, you have others, and this makes sure that that's covered.
Does that answer your question, Senator Barnett?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, no further questions, Your Honor. No, it does, it does, and I thank the author, and you know, and just looking at this bill, watching the public hearing, I too was unsure about what statutes, if any, Guam had on the books relative to Good Samaritans, and I'm glad that we're discussing this and providing further clarity on both what is already on the books and further detail, and thank again the author for answering the questions that I had proposed, because, yeah, I wasn't sure, you hear it, sometimes, do we have a Good Samaritan law? And I was under the impression that we didn't, and I just shuddered to think that if that ever prevented people from rendering assistance because they were scared of that liability. So thank the author for yielding to the questions, Mr. Speaker, and I thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Any other member on the main motion? Senator Trelawney, you're recognized, man.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that questioning regarding the transport. Are we talking about private transport or transport with government vehicles?
I yield to the question. It actually renders both so long as it is recognized as a medical transport, because Guam is not the only one that has transport, you do have private medical transport services. I just followed one today.
Right, so are we trying to cover those people who are doing this as their job?
Again, it's not, first off, it's not automatic that they're covered. The coverage is as a result of basically the process and the procedures, basically the regulations approved by the Department of Public Health and Social Services Offices of Emergency Medical Services.
Right, so Public Health licenses the EMS, and they testify that they are covered, and they said the average layperson does not have all of these safety nets that these EMS under Public Health have, but they did talk about the private transporters who do this for a living, including ambulances, private companies offering ambulance services, and private non-emergent transport, and they pointed to another statute that mandates that those private companies who are doing this as for a living get insurance and, you know, qualifies what type of insurance they have to have, and then that's how they're going to be covered. So I'm just trying to decide, or see if, because, you know, Good Samaritans are covered, but if we're trying to take liability away from private companies who do this for a living, who are supposed to be getting insurance to cover their own liability, I mean, this is their work, so that's not really Good Samaritan anymore, that's, you know, part of their job.
That's why it says, "Without compensation." Without compensation. That, without compensation, doesn't, it doesn't pertain to government. Private is with compensation. They want to pick you up unless you pay them. It says, "Without compensation."
Okay, where's that, "Without compensation," again? On page one, line, yeah, so that's on part A, that's the good faith, emergency care without compensation, but B and C are totally different. C is for medical care attendance. And then it says, "Including but in no way limited," wait. "They shall not be liable for damages for acts or omissions resulting from the rendering of such emergency care, treatment, or assistance, including but not limited to acts or omissions which involve violations of Department of Public Health Service regulations or any other regulations in the rendering of such emergency care." I'm afraid that despite the intention that we might be accidentally making them immune from liability, this one doesn't talk about compensation or not, I'm afraid we're making immune from liability, those who, those who do this as a living, who are required currently by Public Health to get a certain amount of insurance coverage to make sure that any harm that they cause is going, they are liable for it. This one says they're not going to be liable, even if they violate Department of Public Health regulations. And B talks about obstetrical care and emergency care or assistance. I just wondered to, like, does this cover private obstetricians? You know, like, is this going to grant them additional? It says, "Emergency obstetrical care of assistance to a female in active labor who's not previously been cared for in connection with a pregnancy." Well, what if this is in a private clinic? Because this doesn't even talk about scene of an accident or anything like that, it's just, this is an emergency childbirth kind of, right? So I wondered when I saw that, if this, what does this do? Because we know, you know, obstetricians are covered if they are in the hospital, they should have insurance if they're in their own clinics, but this seems to waive that requirement because it just has to be deemed an emergency obstetrical care. Yeah, I just worry about that, especially Public Health and Fire Department both warned us that, I don't know, they seem to think the coverage was good enough under the Good Samaritan law. Samaritan law or under the government of Guam immunity.
I think, in all fairness, you've got to read that whole sentence in its entirety.
Okay, which one, B or C?
The one, when you were talking about obst-
Yeah, B, obstetricians?
This does not relieve the liability of an obstetrician who has direct care of this patient. This is in case of an emergency, and there's, you've got an obstetrician there, not that patient, and being able to provide emergency care.
Right, but it's in a private clinic, right? So they come in-
So long as there's an incident, a scene where the individual's in distress-
But if I'm a doctor, then I would just say, of course, it's emergency care. You know, you never know what's going to happen here. This is a-
Yeah, the difference here is they're talking about an obstetrician who is not the primary care physician for that female.
Well, if there's any other questions, we'll adjust the chair so that we can yield, so we can answer. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
I support the intent of the bill. I just, you know, we were warned by Public Health and Fire Departments that, you know, we've got full coverage under the Good Samaritan law and under the laws of Guam already for those who are doing, who in any way, even off duty, they're covered under the laws of Guam. But for private people, the laws of Guam, according to Public Health, also require that they have insurance to cover liability for transporting people. And they have, I'm sure obstetricians are required to have insurance as well, or they practice at their own risk, right, without insurance. I just don't want to accidentally be waiving liability in B and C for those private companies who are otherwise regulated. If I could take a one-minute recess?
One-minute recess. Legislators back from recess. Senator Trelawney, you're recognized.
Thank you. So, again, I just want to register those concerns. I totally agree that we expand Good Samaritan coverage, you know, no immunity to those who are in good faith acting in an emergency. But I don't agree that we accidentally expand that to private clinics or private, you know, for-profit transport agencies who are supposed to have their own insurance to cover those. And really, it's because, I don't know, I can see situations where they, you know, might try to fit under these, like a loophole, and, you know, so I know that the speaker has spoken previously about good faith, and that's been brought up. So I don't know, I hope it's tight enough. And he says he's inquired with the Criminal Law Revision Commission, and so, I don't know, I don't know what to say. I don't know what they actually said about this, but I just have concerns. So I, again, my concerns are because when GFD came in, they were very crystal clear. We are covered, we do not need any more coverage, and you might be interfering with our coverage by, you know, putting in anything else. And Public Health pretty much said the same thing. So, again, but I'll yield to everyone else. Sejuas Masia.
Thank you, Senator Trelawney. On the main motion, anyone else wants to? Senator Sanagustin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I stand in full support of this bill. What I like about is the very first part, where if it's a response, being a veteran, and many veterans on Guam go through many trainings that deals with responding to a fellow soldier, when he's in need of any care, emergency care, they're able to do this. And with this bill, this protects them, because many of them have said to me that, "Zawa, mazuda, balan, mashuzu," nanga naza. With this bill, in good conscience, that veteran or that individual that's been through all the training, he sees an opportunity to save a life, he can do it. And in good faith, like you've mentioned, Speaker, it's a good bill. The word "no compensation," it's even better. And with that, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to ask that I be included as a co-sponsor of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Sanagustin. Any other member wish to speak on the main motion? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do have also concerns regarding subsection B. So it states "any person," and that's a cause of concern in addition to what was stated earlier, to have such a, you know, considering it could be a layperson, to render emergency obstetrical care. So I'm wondering if it's needed to have any person included in that, considering laypersons don't necessarily have these skills. This is a very, this is a specialty. And so that's wondering, I'm wondering if that is needed.
Is that a question for the author?
Yes.
Would the author yield to the question? Would you want to state the question?
Yeah, so the question is for subsection B, it states "any person," and that is a cause of concern because if this is allowed, they can render obstetrical care when they don't have those skills. And this is a very technical specialty. So, you know, healthcare provider maybe, but not any layperson. That's what my concern is.
Senator, you yield to the question.
If you go past any person, and you go past healthcare provider, it says, "In the absence of gross negligence." Basically, gross negligence is if you don't know what you're doing, don't do it. So the utilization of that "any person" refers to, again, the scenario, the example that was provided by the good senator from Jigoo. And so while you may see concern, and it says, "Any Tom, Dick, and Harry," you also go, "In the absence of gross negligence." And the gross negligence can be defined as, again, very simply, if you don't know what you're doing, don't do it. And if you do do it, that's you're being negligent. And it's also in good faith. Thank you.
So, sorry, follow-up question. So would it hurt the bill if we struck out any person, if that's the case?
Then you was going to say, "Any healthcare provider," and it goes to the concern that was brought up by the previous speaker. What this provides is the ability to be able to provide emergency medical care at a time when it's most necessary by individuals who know what they're doing and want to be able to help.
Does that answer your question, Senator?
Yes. And then also subsection C. So I believe, you know, in regards to 911, is it, yeah, I guess my concern about subsection C is that any emergency care over the phone should be handled by 911 dispatchers. And in fact, clinics will urge callers to call 911. So, again, I'm, yeah, it's not clear to me how this is going to be implemented. And, you know, thinking about the general public, will we have that level of a confidence calling a non-911 number? I think that's just a cause of concern for me in the subsection C. The other question maybe I have for the author is, in times of, you know, let's say mass casualty, is there different rules that apply?
Author, you yield to the question.
Can you clarify that?
In cases of mass casualty, are there different rules that apply?
That goes outside of the scope of what we're discussing here. I don't see how that could be relevant.
Okay, just a question and a thought. Thank you.
Any other member has a, want to speak on the main motion? Senator Blas, you'd like to close?
Thank you. You know, about this time last year, we asked the fire department, "Do you need any help in being able to put up, to bring ambulances on board?" Because there was only two ambulances that were roaming the streets. And they said, "No, we don't need any help." To this day, I think there are only six ambulances, and although the National Fire Protection Standards for the number of ambulance necessary for our population is eight, just three weeks ago, or a few weeks ago, three-year-old boy succumbed to his health issues. What were they doing? They were waiting for an ambulance, because the fire department said, "We don't need The reason why this bill was put together was a discussion with line personnel within the fire department, who have to be the ones responsible for responding. But yet, the upper management said, "It's not necessary." The law does not prescribe, granted, that it provides civil protections from liability while rendering services at the scene, but it's very silent with the transport. We don't need it. I would rather have something that can overprotect us than continue to work with something that we think we're protected by. Because when it becomes necessary and it has to be exercised, it's kind of too late to figure out that we didn't have enough. To allay the concerns that was brought up, and I agree, I'd like to make a couple amendments, and if you permit me, Mr. Speaker, it's just a matter of a couple words placing, and I'll do the necessary paperwork with the clerks after it's done. But on page one, line 10, "After healthcare provider who," then we add a comma, "without compensation and." Okay, so it is very clear that this is the obstetrician that is providing this is not getting paid, or is not the direct or primary care physician for this female. So again, it's "after who, comma, without compensation and." So it's going to be "who, without compensation, and in the gross, in the absence of gross negligence."
Okay. On the amendment, on line 10, "Without compensation," after comma, "without compensation and," "in the absence of gross negligence." Any objections to the amendment? Let's order it.
Second one, Mr. Speaker, is on page two, line six. It's "after emergency care or assistance," and then again, it's "after assistance," it's "without compensation." The words "without compensation." So it'll read, "Office of Emergency Medical Services EMS, who in good faith renders emergency care or assistance without compensation, whether in person or by telephone."
On the amendment, on page two, line six, "after assistance, without compensation." Senator Trelawney, you're recognized.
Thank you. I hope the words "without compensation" will help to clarify, but if I just could just, if the author would yield to a question, I would just like to ask, if we're just trying to expand our Good Samaritan law to cover transportation and not accidentally create loopholes for private companies who aren't in these businesses, can we just expand the Good Samaritan law, the main 2104, to include the language in this bill regarding transportation, and so that they're both together? So the care at the site or the transportation, as he described it fully in here, it says, yeah, and that way, we don't have this stuff about the violations that even though they violate Department of, we're talking about EMS personnel who violate Public Health Regulations, and then we're talking about trans, sorry, you know, people who are providing obstetrical care, perhaps in clinics, I don't know, I just, I think it would be much more narrow if we could just amend the 2104 instead of adding a new 2104.1, and just expand it with all the language in here regarding transport. That way, we don't open any other doors for gross negligence by persons, because that's going to be judged very differently. Gross negligence by an EMS personnel, you know, is going to be kind of easy to detect. But gross negligence by a layperson like me, the standard of care for me is almost zero. So I could do almost anything because I'm not supposed to know anything. So I can really commit gross negligence. It's going to look gross and negligent, but it might not be deemed gross negligent because the standard of care for me is that I'm not supposed to know anything about obstetrical care. So if I did that, I don't know, I just feel like I'm just worried that anyways, that's- anyways, that's, that was just, if the author would yield, is he open to the suggestion of putting 2104 in here and just adding all that transportation language into 2104, the Good Samaritan law? Because we know that the government of Guam law already covers everybody who's working or even EMS who are not working off-duty, they're covered. So their transportation is not a problem. And then we just keep it limited to Good Samaritans, as opposed to private clinics or private transport companies.
The author? Would you?
I ask the Mr. Speaker, what is that going to do with the amendment? The discussion is supposed to be centered on the amendment.
The amendment?
I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, but I'm going to have to object in as far as germane is to the conversation.
If he doesn't want to yield, that's fine.
It's not a matter of yielding, Mr. Speaker.
I'll just speak on the amendment, as I was. Adding the words without compensation will simply mean that this private company just says, I'm not going to charge you for that. But that is within their scope of duties. Same thing with clinics. If something goes wrong, I can see why they would say, I'm not going to charge you for that. And that's why, I just don't want to accidentally create these huge loopholes. So that's why, the words are okay, but I just think, together with the whole paragraph, it still, it still creates some loopholes. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
On the amendment?
On the amendment, any objections? No objections.
Can I finish my?
You can continue.
My closing?
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to be able to add co-sponsors to the legislation as was requested. I'd like to add Senator Teletidegui, Senator Sean Gomatauto, Senator Shelley Cavill, Senator Joe Sinagastin, Senator Jesse Luhon, Senator Vince Borha. Vice Speaker?
On the amendment to add co-sponsors, any objections? No objections. What a motion?
On the motion, to move 76-38 COR, as amended in the committee and as further amended on the floor, to the third reading.
There's a motion to move 76-38 COR, as amended by the committee and further amended on the floor, to the third reading. Any objections? No objections. So. The next bill, Bill number 84-38 COR. Good Senator from Jigos, Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to place Bill 84-38 COR, as amended by the committee, to the third reading file, and I wish to briefly discuss it.
You want to go ahead and read the title, please? Read the title.
Bill 84-38 is an act to add a new section to subsection 3101, Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Adopting Military Certification as Qualification for Guam Chauffeur's License.
You can proceed, sir.
Thank you. And this bill was introduced by myself, Senator Sinagastin, with co-sponsors, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, Senator Sabrina Salas Montanani, Senator Shelley Cavill, Senator Jesse Luhon, Senator Tina Rose Wunya Barnes, Senator Chris Duennas, and Senator Will Parkinson. Mr. Speaker, when an individual serves our island and nation in the United States Armed Forces, they're able to acquire a military license that provides clearances for operating commercial motor vehicles such as buses and tractors through the completion of the driver's training program that encompasses all necessary instructions required by federal law. Prior to the military learner's permit issued and if selected to receive military driver's license, they must complete their respective military certification program, more intense than what everybody goes through for a regular driver's license. In Bill 84, we will give Revenue and Tax the authority to grant certified endorsement on a Guam driver's license for individuals who meet the requirements set by Revenue and Tax in consultation with Veterans Affairs Office. Together, they will work on establishing the process for application and verification of the veterans' military endorsement toward a Guam driver's license. The military endorsement a veteran possesses will be certified through ADD214 or the National Guard equivalent, the NGB22. Currently in Guam, Section 3101, Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 16 outlines the requirements needed to obtain a chauffeur's driver's license. Guam qualifications require that an applicant for a chauffeur's license must be at least 18 years of age. And if the applicant is for a new license and not renewal, the individual must have completed a valid driver's education course. This would entail going through an examination which would include a test of the applicant's knowledge, understanding, and executing an actual demonstration of their ability to exercise reasonable control in operating a motor vehicle through road tests. So with the federal testing requirement that due to the military's rigorous and detailed certification, an extensive qualification required to obtain a military license to operate commercial motor vehicles, we recognize the great valuable skills veterans possess with driver's training program certification. Again, Revenue and Tax and the Veterans Affairs Office will work in tandem to ensure that military certifications that apply, that the applying veteran process is in line with Guam's local requirement to ensure seamless local endorsements where and when applicable by creating a certifying process promulgating rules within 120 days of enactment. So today, let us help veterans seeking civilian employment that requires certain job requirements that allow for the direct adoption of military certification as qualifications for a Guam chauffeur's license. At the end of the day, this measure aims to acknowledge the transfer skill, transferable skills veterans acquired during their service, assisting in creating an easier transition for our veterans into civilian careers. I want to thank the Oversight Chair and the Committee for their work on this bill to ensure that the concerns brought forth in the hearing were addressed in this amendment version. And I ask for your support. Sutus Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much. On the bill, General Lady from Tumuni, you're recognized, ma'am.
Sutus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for allowing me to make some comments. And as the Oversight Chair on this bill, the first thing I want to say is thank you so much for their participation in the market meeting, his office with his chief policy advisor in attendance, as well as, I think I had one other person there. I think it was Phil Leongaro who was there that provided some insight as well to moving this bill to address some of the concerns. And then based on the testimonies provided during the public hearing and, and of course, the further consultation with the Department of Revenue and Taxation and the Office of Veterans Affairs, we amended Bill 84-38 COR, as amended, to add language to address concerns as follows. We incorporated the situation where guard against, that would guard against fraud with verification by the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs. The Guam Veterans Affairs shall serve as this certifying authority for verifying authenticity of military driver's training certificate was one of the changes. We also incorporated to promote accountability through documentation requirements. And this allows DRT to require the submission of additional documentation or proof of experience to support endorsement eligibility, which gives Rev and Tax flexibility to investigate unclear and borderline applications to protect against accidental insurance and unqualified applications. We also incorporated to keep skills current through operational retesting. And if more than five years have passed since the date of the issuance of the applicant's military driver's certificate, the department may require a road test skill. This amendment aligns with the best practices used by commercial licensing and federal CDL waivers. It is to ensure that veterans with outdated training still demonstrate road readiness. We also made a point to define legal boundaries to avoid overissuance. So DRT shall not issue endorsements beyond verified certification unless additional testing is completed. This sets clear legal limits to prevent abuse and misrepresentation and reduces risk of liability in cases of accidents involving improperly endorsed drivers. And then lastly, the established, we established a rule-making mandate. DRT shall promulgate rules within 120 days of enactment to include a defined matrix of endorsement equivalently and documentation protocols, endorse equivalency and documentation protocols. So there was, there was quite a bit of changes on there, but there were changes for the best. And again, I like to thank the author's office and his participation in the market meeting that actually helped formulate these, these changes. So other than that, thank you for the opportunity to provide my colleagues this report in the market meeting of this bill.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill, on the bill, are there any senators wanting to speak on the bill? On the bill? Senator Sinagastin?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I only have one amendment, and that's to add the chair, the chairwoman of the committee that assisted this bill and put all the, what we needed put on the bill. And that's Senator Teletidegui. And with that, I ask that we move the bill to the third reading, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion to add Senator Tadegui as co-sponsor, any objections? No objections? So ordered. Now to move the bill to the third reading?
Yes, and if we can move it to the third reading, Mr. Speaker.
Motion to move Bill 84-38 COR, as amended by the committee, further amended on the floor, to the third reading. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. The next one actually is a colleague that is absent. I caution that if you, would you be able to speak on her behalf?
She's, she provided, they provided me all the, the opening statement unless the body chooses not to allow me to do that.
Indifference to the people that have, I recognize and I appreciate why she's not here, but I have to, okay, I'm going to have to follow the rules that you got, you have to be present to be able to present.
All right, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Very much. Next up, Senator Parrish?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Notwithstanding House rules, I move to switch the placement of Bill 17 in place, wish to move up Bill 16 in place of Bill 17 and move down Bill 17, we're in Bill 16 slot.
Where is Bill 16 at right now?
It's in, let me check, hold on.
So you want to move Bill 17 to where, to the 27th slot?
27th slot.
And move Bill 16 up?
To this slot, which is the 26th.
Any objections to that? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you for that. So I would like to place Bill 16-38 into the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
Can you go ahead and read the title, ma'am?
The title is an act to add a new Article 2 to Chapter 2, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Reporting Requirements on the Use of Unclassified Employment.
Can I ask, Speaker, to move to the third?
Yes, I would like to move it to the third reading and if I could discuss. Thank you. Bill 16-38 aims to strengthen transparency and accountability in the government hiring, specifically by requiring biannual reporting of hiring unclassified employees or for classified employees occupying an unclassified, I'm sorry, for classified positions occupied by unclassified incumbents. Classified positions could be administrative positions such as accounting, human resources, procurement, IT, or maintenance, custodial, educational, law enforcement, healthcare, and engineering, to name a few. So Bill 16 would require the following information by all branches of agencies, all branches, agencies, autonomous agencies, instrumentalities and public corporations of the government of Guam. So it would require the following information, the position's title and number if applicable, the position's pay grade and step, the position's salary, and the reasons, reason or reasons why it is not practicable to use the merit system for such a position. So Guam's Organic Act requires a merit-based system for public employment, ensuring that hiring decisions are based solely on qualifications. The Organic Act requires that the legislature create a merit system for government civil service and requires that the government of Guam use it wherever practicable. In legal terms, practicable means something that is feasible or capable of being done, especially with available means or with reason or prudence. It's often used in statutes to include, indicate when, how, or if something should be done. Unclassified employment means that these employees need not compete for their jobs, and the appointing authority can hire them up to step 10 of their pay grade. So the intent of this bill is not to eliminate unclassified employees, but to have the agencies and their directors to be transparent and disclose why they believe that it is not practicable to fill such positions with a classified employee pursuant to the merit system. Transparency is always important when public funds are spent. We have open procurement processes in the Sunshine Act for public documents. We must also ensure that the government leaders are transparent when they opt to not use the merit system for hiring government workers. It is understandable the policy staff of elected officials should be employed only for the term of office that the official is elected for. In fact, there is in Guam law that lists all the unclassified, it authorizes which positions are unclassified. And there are, however, instances where individuals are hired for jobs that are normally held by classified employees for these positions, such as accounting, finance, human resources, payroll, procurement, without clear justification. By mandating biannual reporting, we provide the public and policymakers the transparency needed to ensure fair hiring practices, protect career opportunities for our people, and promote good governance. For too long, qualified individuals have faced barriers to stable government employee employment because the system lacks oversight. This bill is one measure to help restore trust in how our government hires and retains its workforce. I want to thank my colleagues, my co-sponsors for their support, Senators Teletidegui, Theresa Lahey, Chris Barnett. I also want to thank Chairman, Senator Duennas, for the, for the work of his committee to get this bill onto the session floor. And I humbly ask for my colleagues for their support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill, are there any senators wishing to speak on the bill? On the bill? No senators wishing to speak on the bill? Good Senator, General Lady from Jorney, you're recognized, ma'am.
Sutus Massey, I stand in full support of this bill, primarily because of what it does for the merit system and for classified employees. They're supposed to be the priority of our government. The Organic Act says actually they're the only types of employees we're supposed to have. And so the long list that we have right now of employees that the legislature And so the long list that we have right now of employees that the legislature has authorized to be non-unclassified is huge, and it includes positions that just, you know, you have to wonder. Some of them are carryovers from previous legislatures, and you just have to wonder how did that happen? They're almost always in the budget laws where we say that, you know, you can't hire unclassified employees with any of this money in the budget except for, and then the long, long list. Certified persons at GDOE, any academic teaching positions at UOG or GCC, nurses, doctors, licensed health professionals, contact tracers, investigators, ancillary health employees for clinical purposes at the Department of Public Health and Social Services, behavioral health, the chief medical examiner's office at GMH, at GPD, at DISIT, and Department of Labor survey workers. Now, those sound a little bit more temporary. Anyways, we could just go through the whole list, and I guess I'm hoping that this bill is going to put a little bit more of a duty on each of these agencies to justify again, relook why should they be, and are they truly in need of unclassified employees? Because otherwise, we got a big trouble years ago in the Hauser case when the AG's office had hired unclassified employees, and it seemed, you know, practical at the time. We're going to hire lawyers to be unclassified, and that way the AG can make them come and go, and they can come and go. But Hauser sued and was determined to be a classified or entitled to all classified employee rights, and we paid a big settlement in that case. And so what's happening now, I think, is we are a little bit potentially liable for this, you know, people on this list of unclassified employees in case they want to, you know, they're let go and they want to sue. They might say, no, I've been there already, and I am protected. And so I think this is a good, perfect time, actually, to do this bill, make sure that these agencies take a good look at their use of classified and that it's consistent with the law, and perhaps they can get guidance, you know, agencies, I mean, across the government so that we can be consistent again in our agencies as to determining this. I love the parts in this bill that say they're going to report all of these and then the rationale, and the salaries, pay grades and steps, the reason why it's not practicable to use the merit system. I think the more transparency, the better when it comes to these. And because of the morale that it might also cause for the classified employees, we're trying to retain them. We're spending a lot of money in some cases to retain classified employees, such as GPD and other places. So we want to make sure, you know, they see it a lot. Unclassified employees will come in, get paid higher than they are, get promoted or get put into positions without ever having worked in that agency. And so I just think this will help as well the morale of the classified employees who have been working hard in these agencies for many years. So I thank the sponsor for this bill, and thank you for allowing me to be a co-sponsor as well. Sis Massey.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill, gentlelady from Timoting, ma'am, you're recognized.
Sis Massey, Mr. Speaker, and I stand in full support of this bill. In fact, if you recall last term, Mr. Speaker, this bill was introduced similar -- well, I don't think there was any changes to it, but it was introduced last year and received support. It had a public hearing, but it didn't go anywhere after that. And what really gets me is that, you know, we have the public auditor who showed up. I think he showed up last time too as well. But I just want to, you know, for the record and those listening, exactly what the public auditor said. He said, if I might comment just on that one bill, this bill, on the classified employees, I really think the legislature needs to closely look at how unclassifieds are used. Because as a judge, one of the decisions that I had made that was one of the most costly was coming to the realization that the Organic Act of Guam mandates to have classified system, and it includes everybody. So just making that comment alone, the importance of transparency. It promotes -- this bill totally promotes transparency, and we all know that's what the OPA is all about, transparency. Regular reports to the legislature is needed, which will increase oversight of the government hiring practices and deter potential abuse of unclassified employees. It encourages merit-based hiring. The bill enforces the Organic Act's merit system principles by requiring agencies to justify unclassified hires. Identifies patterns of unclassified hiring by collecting and analyzing the data. Lawmakers and the public can spot trends in hiring and ensure compliance with hiring regulations. And we see that quite a bit during the budget time, when we see those staffing patterns. Then, of course, this could lead to policy reform. If reports reveal excess use of unclassified employment in certain agencies, it could trigger policy decisions to improve government hiring practices. There are so many good reasons why this bill needs to get the support of this body. There are so many good reasons why the government of Guam will benefit, and there are so many good reasons for all those individuals who come into the government of Guam with merit, credentials that meet the specifications for their job. We would be doing an injustice if we did not track this and ensured that there is no abuse of this system that this government had put in place. So I stand in full support and ask my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the bill, gentlelady from Maga, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I had a question on Bill 16. I was going through the committee report, and in the findings and recommendations, it stated that the committee concludes that based on the testimony received and the committee's deliberation, Bill Number 16-38 Cor has been reported out of committee with no substantive amendments. While the public hearing offered thoughtful discussion on the importance of transparency and adherence to merit-based hiring practices, the absence of testimony from the Department of Administration, the agency most critical to implementing the proposed reporting requirements, left important questions unanswered. As such, the committee was unable to fully evaluate the operation or fiscal impact of the measure on government entities. So my question to the author, since the public hearing, have you had an opportunity to speak with the Department of Administration, and have they offered any testimony to you on this bill?
The author, you willing to?
And if they had, can you please share it with us, because I didn't see anything in the committee report?
Would you yield, ma'am?
So they haven't reached out to me, but I believe the committee chair might, if they might be able to have any information on that. But for me, they haven't reached out to me. Sorry, they haven't reached out to me personally.
Did you reach out to the Department of Administration for comment on your bill?
Would you like to yield to that question?
Yes, we did. In fact, we recommended also, we waited, in fact, for the director to arrive. So, yeah, I'm not exactly sure if the -- yeah, he had the opportunity and to -- he had the opportunity to reach out in regards to this. But again, as well as to the chair.
Okay. Just checking if you followed up, but thank you. I do also support the intent of this legislation, so thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Gentlemen from Ipana, you're recognized, sir.
Sis Massey, Mr. Speaker, and buenas noches, and good evening to the people of Guam. Thank you for watching our session. Hope you had a good dinner. Rise in strong support of this measure, very proud to be a co-sponsor. And I agree with one of the retiring speakers in what the aim of this bill is, and it is to protect our hard-working classified employees in the merit system, because they are sick and tired of being fed up. They're sick and tired of going to work every day, waiting for their increment. Meanwhile, somebody's pari gets hired into an unclassified position, oftentimes at a pay rate much higher than a hard-working classified employees. They're not held accountable, and it's become such a part of our culture that it's joked about so much, hiring your pari, the pari-party system. But it's really led to widespread hiring across all the agencies, you know, the unclassified hires, especially with the receipt of the ARP funds. We've seen so many unclassified employees being hired with the ARP funds. And I think the reason why we see that is, and it's abused, I'm sure there are some good uses of unclassified hires right in a pinch, but really what it looks like to most of our classified employees is they have the connections to get hired. They have the connections to be hired at an above-step pay grade, oftentimes making more money than classified employees who have been in our government for decades, and it's unfair. And I agree also with the gentlelady from Timoting in getting this information reported. Maybe it informs us and we can kind of close the loophole and the abuse that's become very rampant as we've seen our government grow. I mean, you know, one of the habits that I've had for many years is always looking at the hiring that the government of Guam does, different agencies. Specifically, I really enjoy looking at the DOA website, the Department of Administration website, and I'll give you two guesses what they would say about the bill. They probably want to throw it in the trash can. I'm even curious if this bill will pass, since we have so many people in this chamber who are running for governor, and maybe they don't want to tell the legislature who they're hiring. Maybe they want to preserve the ability to hire unclassified employees. But, you know, even with all of these challenges that our island is facing with shortfalls and funding cuts, the hiring continues. Just go on the website. I was just looking at a name that was in the news recently with all this alleged PUA corruption and find out this person has been working in the branch of the government that assists with the homeless. You know, you just go down the website, and the hiring just continues and continues, and a lot of it is unclassified. Special assistants, staff assistants, program coordinators, right? We see it, DOE, we see it all across the government of Guam. And so I'm curious what the actual numbers are, because if you just go through a lot of the staffing patterns, the government has grown, and, you know, sometimes you scroll and it's just unclass and class and class and class and class. And so I like that the author has included here some of the reporting requirements, the position title, number, position's pay grade and step, the position's salary. And this part, I kind of had a laugh. The reasons why it's not practicable to use the merit system, classified employment for such a position, and I think unfortunately in a lot of cases with the politics, the reason why they use the unclassified system is because a lot of these employees, these political hires, wouldn't be able to get through a merit-based hiring. And that's really the sin and the slap in the face of our hard-working employees in the classified system. Don't even get me started on the Civil Service Commission, but we have to do what we can to protect these employees in the merit system. And I think we can do that by really getting a handle on this unclassified hiring that unfortunately is all too rampant in our government, Mr. Speaker. So, you know, I'm curious, I was looking at the committee report, and no one in the committee voted to do pass. It was all just report out. So I'm really curious to see where the vote on this is going to lie, as we've had, you know, several announcements. Mr. Speaker, as I'm sure you're aware, that some of our colleagues in here are going to be pursuing a higher office. So I think I'm going to be looking at a lot of these measures we're entertaining and kind of taking that information in and seeing if we're starting to do things in this body to maybe lay the groundwork for some of our colleagues who are going to make a run. And good luck, good luck for higher office. Sis Massey, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Good gentleman from Talavovo. Top that, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the chance to offer up my observations of Bill 16. At first glance, the bill builds on the laws that we have in place governing the employment of unclassified personnel, including but not limited to 4GCA Section 2106, which provides that any employment within the unclassified service of the government of Guam, including autonomous and semi-autonomous agencies where no specific term of appointment or employment is specified in law, shall be at the pleasure of the appointing authority. 4GCA Section 2107, which forbids the contract of employment in the unclassified service within the government of Guam unless such employment contract is specifically permitted by law. 4GCA Section 2109, which prohibits the hiring of new unclassified employees following the defeat of an incumbent in an election. And 4GCA Section 2110, which prohibits the hiring of unclassified employees employed by incumbents not seeking reelection. Mr. Speaker, in addition to asking for clarification during the public hearing on Bill 16 relative to the penalties that would be imposed upon agencies failing to comply with the proposed mandates, I also question whether the current policy mandating agencies to submit quarterly staffing patterns be modified to incorporate the justification reporting requirements that are proposed in this measure. For reference, the current budget law requires staffing patterns to include at a minimum the name of every current employee and his or her position title, most recent hire date, salary, increment costs and benefit costs, the funding source for his or her salary and benefits, and the gross salary and benefits paid for during the applicable quarter. Mr. Speaker, I also want to just, when I think about the committee report, I would encourage, again, our colleagues to go back and take a read too, and I'm hoping that as we are considering a vote on this bill, that we take a look at the final paragraph in the committee report. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the chance to, or Mr. Speaker, for the chance for speaking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill? On the bill? Any other senator wishing to speak on the bill? No other senator? Senator Parrish, you can close, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for my colleagues for the debate. So really, the purpose of this bill is to highlight or bring transparency to a problem that exists in our government today, is the rampant use of unclassified hirings, above-step grade pay raises, and, you know, we're really moving away from the merit system. And in fact, it'd be great if we could support this bill on the eve of the celebrations of the Organic Act, because in fact, the Organic Act is, requires merit-based hiring. Because in fact, the Organic Act is, requires merit-based hiring. But that aside, you know, I want to restate that the intent of this bill is to provide transparency for all directors who use unclassified, unclassified employment when in fact they can fill those positions with a classified employee. So Bill 16 does not eliminate these positions, unclassified positions. It simply asks agencies to report twice a year when and why they choose to not use a merit-based hiring system for certain roles, which includes details such as position title, pay, and justification. The Organic Act calls on us to ensure merit-based hiring whenever practicable. Bill 1638 provides a reasonable, consistent way to assess that standard across agencies while respecting the discretion needed for certain appointments. And transparency is always important when public funds are spent, especially now during these times of cuts. So this measure is a simple measure that helps to protect the integrity of the merit system and promotes fairness in hiring and builds upon public confidence in our workforce decisions. I just want to add that in my oversight hearings, it was quite clear of GovGuam's and perhaps since the pandemic, there has been a huge shift when it comes to non-competitive hiring. And so unclassified positions is just the tip of the iceberg. I've seen detailed appointments to positions where these entry-level workers are promoted to positions above employees in an agency who have those credentials or were not given that opportunity to fill those positions. So again, this bill is just one measure of many measures that are needed to bring light, to clean up our government when it comes to hiring. I feel that we've lost our way when it comes to hiring based on merit. And especially now in times are tough, as far as the budget is concerned, we really need to take a look, a hard look, and make these difficult changes or change these practices of using non-competitive hiring practices to fill positions that should have been merit-based. I think this is, reporting is just one small measure, but again, there could be other measures to follow. I ask my colleagues' support for this important measure and to keep fairness and build public trust, rebuild a public trust and confidence. Sidozmasia.
Thank you. Let's take a one-minute recess, please. Huh?
Yes, I moved to place Bill 16 dash.
Back in session, go ahead, ma'am.
I moved to place Bill 16-38 to third reading file.
Any objections? Any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator Gomitato. Bill 103-38. You're up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to place Bill 103-38 COR as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and Guam National Guard on their third reading file and request to speak on the bill.
You can proceed.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity this evening to present Bill 103-38 COR as amended, which if approved, authorizes the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission to grant temporary peace officer certification for individuals who possess a degree in criminal justice or equivalent area of study and who are in good standing. For the record, the issue of temporary certification remains a quote "pending task" of the Post Commission since at least over a year ago. According to information I received during a commission meeting that I attended this past April, the Commission continues to work on this issue and action on Bill 103 as amended will help bring them closer to establishing the necessary rules and regulations consistent with the legal authority this measure provides if enacted. Mr. Speaker, this proposal was born out of a discussion that I had with Attorney General Douglas Moylan back in January of this year during my very first official meeting as a newly sworn-in member of the 38th Guam Legislature. Mr. Speaker, AG Moylan and I discussed the importance and urgency of figuring out a way, a policy the AG and other agency heads could rely on to hire criminal justice graduates and other eligible degree holders to fill critical law enforcement positions and allow them to complete any pending Post Commission certification requirements while employed with these entities. Mr. Speaker, I appreciate that the Office of the Attorney General led the way for Bill 103-38 COR, specifically their efforts in 2024 to create the Investigator Trainee OAG position. Now, examples of an investigator trainee's work include, but are not limited to assisting seasoned investigators, interview witnesses and suspects, collecting and preserving evidence, serving warrants for arrests, searches and seizures, and testifying in court as a government witness. Mr. Speaker, based on the testimonies offered during the May 2025 public hearing on Bill 103, the bill's markup process and communication with the Judiciary of Guam, the Post Commission, and the Office of the Attorney General, the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and your Guam National Guard amended the bill specifically, Section 2 of the bill, which authorizes employing agencies to prescribe limited duties for temporarily certified peace officers. Section 2 was amended to require temporarily certified hires to obtain full certification by the Post Commission within nine months of temporary certification. Failure to complete pending requirements within this period shall result in separation from employment. Section 2 provides that employing agencies shall retain the authority provided in 17 GCA 51105C to establish qualifications and standards that exceed those set by the Post Commission. Mr. Speaker, that particular amendment essentially means that a Post Commission-recognized agency maintains the discretion on whether to alter its existing qualifications and standards and allow for temporary certification. If an agency like GPD, for example, decides that it does not want to hire police officers with temporary Post Commission certification, then they don't have to. Nothing in Bill 103 as amended requires GPD or any agency to hire an individual who has been temporarily certified by the Post Commission. Okay? At the request of the Attorney General, following his review of the committee's draft on Bill Number 103-38 COR, a new section was added to amend 17 GCA 51105B, authorizing the Attorney General to waive the two-year civil or criminal investigative work experience requirement for the Office of the Attorney General's Investigator 1 AG position. Although the AG requested the committee to remove the two-year civil or criminal investigative work experience requirement, the committee decided to authorize the OAG to waive the requirement whenever the AG deems necessary. And finally, with respect to the use of the Manpower Development Fund, the MDF, for courses and related training required for Post Commission certification. And based on testimonies, and I thank our friends at the Guam Department of Labor and the Guam Community College, Bill 103 as amended requires the approval of the Guam Department of Labor Director or the Guam Community College Board of Trustees for the expenditure of their respective share of the MDF. Mr. Speaker, if approved, Bill 103 provides the legal authority for government agencies, including but not limited to the Office of the Attorney General, the Judiciary of Guam, the Guam Department of Corrections, to hire college graduates or professionals if they secure temporary Post Commission certification. The legal authority that's provided by Bill 103 means that our Attorney General and other agency heads will have a real opportunity to hire the more than two dozen college graduates who applied this past year but lack the Post Commission certification and to help our public safety agencies. Mr. Speaker, I would like to kind of end my opening by reading into the record the comments of former Senator, FBI Special Agent, Homeland Security Advisor, Chief of Police, and Corrections Director, and let me add Instructor at the University of Guam Frank Ishizaki. In support of Bill 103, it's similar to the perspectives that were offered by other public safety leadership, including DOC, the Judiciary of Guam, and the Post Commission. Chief Ishizaki shared that a temporary post certificate will greatly enhance a critical need to recruit new candidates. And he hopes that our UOG Criminal Justice graduates can be employed without extra delays. Now, Chief Ishizaki wrote that UOG's Criminal Justice Program covers many of the post standards, but minimizes the value of the CJ degree. Now, what he says is that UOG CJ graduates are required to take many of the same courses that are required of post graduates. These include Criminal Law, Trial and Evidence, Ethics, The Rule of Law, Criminal Procedure, Case Laws, Adjudication Procedure, Law Enforcement Conduct, and many other courses and topics. Because we compete with federal and other employers, former Senator Ishizaki argues that our self-imposed employment hindrances often discourage our graduates, our University of Guam graduates, from serving in our island community. Many of our college graduates have to wait at least a year and often longer to navigate the regulations gauntlet that we impose on them. They all need jobs. We need them too, don't we? We often take the first one that's offered, meaning these young people will take the first job that they're going to be, that's going to be given to them. We miss opportunities, Mr. Speaker, to employ our own people and then fail to understand why our graduates opt to go elsewhere. Our current law sets high vetting standards for new recruits to GPD, DOC, and Guam Customs. This temporary waiver will help. Mr. Speaker, I thank Chief Ishizaki for participating in this important policy development. And I echo his sentiments on Bill 103, particularly his view that this particular measure is a great start, Mr. Speaker, to help launch future criminal justice students' careers by addressing longstanding barriers to recruitment of critical public safety positions and to help keep our graduates right here at home in order to serve our island community. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on Bill 103 as amended. And I look forward to the discussion this evening. Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker.
Before you sit, you know, as a matter of, can you go ahead and read the title into the?
I knew you were going to ask me that. An act to amend Bill 103, that's COR as amended, is an act to amend and renumber Section 51102H of Chapter 51, Title 17, to amend Section 51103B4 of Chapter 51's Title 17, to amend Chapter, sorry, excuse me, to amend.
Subsection.
Subsection 51105B? Okay. Of Chapter 51, Title 17, and to amend Section 7102, 120 of Chapter 7, Title 22, all of the Guam Code annotated relative to authorizing the temporary certification of peace officers and to authorizing the Manpower Development Fund for certification courses required by the Peace Officers, Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator.
And apologies for not starting with that, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, apologies accepted. Thank you very much. On the bill, Bill Number 103-38 COR. Are there any senators wishing to speak on the bill? On the bill. Senator General Lady from Timoting, you're recognized.
Sidozmasia, Mr. Speaker. You know, looking over the committee report and attending this public hearing on information that was provided to us, and one of them was from the Department of Labor, which as an oversight chair, you know, I really wanted to pay attention to what they had to say. And I'm glad that, well, first, and just at the tail end of the testimony, in closing, the department does not support the funding source for two specific reasons. One, there are funding currently available for the training under the Workforce Initiative and Opportunity Act Adult Program. Two, the funding source identified in the bill will impact the Department of Labor operation. So I was happy to see in the markup meeting and the change in the amendment in, on page six, subject to, on letter C, subject to the approval of the Department of Labor Director, you know, to ensure if there is any funding available. And then as well to the Guam Community College on the same page, letter A, subject to the approval of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees. So I'm glad that was addressed because there is other opportunities for funding in this perspective. But my next question was, just trying to look through the bill, the amended bill, see the section, if there is anything in here that... I thought I heard something of hiring of individuals for the Post Commission, the Peace Officer Training Program for certified police. Yeah, I think under the post. So can I ask the question, please, of the author? Is there anything in here that that allows for the hiring of like an administrator or? Is there anything in here that allows for the hiring of, like, an administrator or admin or anything like that?
The author, you to the question?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. This is specifically for peace officers, for a temporary peace officer's certification. No administration, no administrators are part of the statute or the proposal.
That answer your question?
Actually, I'm just asking about the hiring of any additional members to the Post or anything like that. So I wasn't sure if, he said, no, I know it doesn't deal with, it only deals with peace officers, but is there any hiring here? Just a yes or no? Yeah.
Mr. Speaker, no administrative staff will?
Okay. Yeah, that's it. So again, I greatly appreciate the concerns by the Department of Labor and addressing that in this amended version. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. On the bill, on the bill, any senator wishing to speak on the bill? No senator wishing to speak on the bill? Senator Gomitato, you can close on your bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. Again, I appreciate the support on Bill 103 as amended. I do appreciate the input again and look forward to moving this policy forward for the benefit of our public safety community and the people of Guam. I encourage each of you, my colleagues, to support this common sense policy proposal as a responsible approach to, among other things, recruiting college graduates who have invested their own time and resources to earn their undergraduate degrees and who want to begin careers as members of Guam's public safety community. Our families, our business sector, and our military and our federal government partners are counting on this 38th Guam legislature to prioritize public safety, which shouldn't always be about money, but responsible and pragmatic policies such as Bill 103. Thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, for the opportunity to move this critical issue forward, and I move to place Bill 103-38COR as amended to the voting file.
On the motion to move the bill to the voting file, any objections? Bill 103-38COR, third reading, sorted. Senator, you want to go, you want to deal with yours tonight? You can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At this time, I'd like to move Bill 106-38 to the third reading file, and I would like to discuss, the bill is an Act to amend subsection B of 60.8, Chapter 60, Title 10, Title 8 of the Guam Code Annotated Relative to Prohibiting Plea Deals Without Reasonable Proof of Victim Notification.
You can proceed.
Thank you, sir. I rise to speak today, and good evening to my colleagues and to the people of Guam. I rise to speak today for the voices that are too often silenced, for the individuals whose lives are irrevocably altered by crime, and for their right to be treated with fundamental fairness and dignity. Colleagues, behind every case file, behind every criminal charge, there is a human being who has suffered, a mother, a father, a son, a daughter, a neighbor. And while we rightly afford every defendant their constitutional protections, our system has, at times, failed to provide the most basic courtesy to the victims, the right to be kept informed. As I shared during the public hearing, one survivor put it this way. This horrific crime has traumatized and continues to impact me, and yet the judicial process failed me over and over again when she found out only two weeks ago that her attacker would not serve any more prison time. This is the type of injustice that Bill 106-38 seeks to end. It amends our law to ensure that no plea agreement can be accepted by a court unless the prosecution provides reasonable documented proof that the victim has been notified. As the committee report notes, Guam Crime Victims Rights Act already mandates that victims be notified and have a chance to express their views. This bill adds the critical guardrail of proof, ensuring this right is not just a suggestion but a requirement. It codifies the best practices already being used by our Attorney General's Crime Victims' Response Unit, making a victim's advocate certification a formal part of the process. The National Association of Social Workers Guam Chapter, in their powerful testimony in support of this bill, stated that a reoccurring theme in this work is the re-traumatization survivors experience when justice excludes their voice. By ensuring victims are informed, we restore a measure of control and prevent the psychological harm that comes from being blindsided and silenced. Second, this is a vital step towards a trauma-informed justice system that promotes healing. As Carissa Pangolinen, the Director of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, testified, this bill ensures that victims are not sidelined in the judicial process, but rather informed, consulted, and empowered to have a voice. By mandating notification and consultation, this legislation offers a path forward towards healing and accountability. As Director Pangolinen said, a justice process that values communication with victims promotes emotional recovery and strengthens public confidence in our courts. Colleagues, passing Bill 106-38 sends a clear message. On Guam, we stand with survivors. We demand a justice system that is not only efficient but also compassionate and accountable. Bill 106-38 will help to ensure that no victim falls through the cracks by mandating that certification, that victim was notified, or that every effort was made to notify the victim. And with that can come accountability if this doesn't happen. I thank the committee for their work on this important measure. I understand that the Attorney General provided one suggested amendment, the addition of one word to the bill. That one word was not included by the committee in the final version, though I would be willing to accept such a change. I urge all of you to join me in supporting Bill 106-38 for the sake of fairness, for the sake of dignity, and for the sake of true justice. I humbly ask my colleagues for this support, and with that, Mr. Speaker, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Senator. Recognize the good lady from Tumari.
Sujus Masim, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to stand and speak as the committee chair on this measure that was taken to my committee. Yes, we did quite a bit of work on this, on this measure, and, you know, but if you read the committee report, which is extensive, on the findings of it, that you'll find that, yes, it does already have this mechanism in place. And I do have an amendment that I'd like to proffer, I'm just trying to figure out why it's not out. I know we sent it in ahead of time. Do we have the amendment? Maybe one minute before I talk, because I'm just going to talk on the amendment and why we came to this amendment. So if we can have one minute while they look for it, because it was sent ahead of time.
Okay, one minute, one minute reasons. Back in order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for that moment of recess to try and find the amendment, but it's very simple amendment to add into. So first, I rise to, to offer an amendment to Bill 106-38 on, on page one, line 12. And this basically is to expand the certification requirement to include not only victims advocate for the Office of the Attorney General of Crime Victims Response Unit, but also the prosecutors assigned to the case. So colleagues, if you look at page one, line 12, right where it says, "No plea agreement shall be accepted by the courts unless the agreement includes a certification of a victim's advocate for the Office of Attorney General's Crime Victims Response Unit," and incorporate there, "or a prosecutor assigned to the case." So you're just putting a prosecutor and then continuing assigned to the case affirming one of the following. So that's the amendment. And the recommendation came from the Office of the Attorney General to strengthen the bill by ensuring both flexibility and accountability, especially in cases where victim's advocate may not be readily available. It enforces the bill's goal to ensure victims are properly informed and their rights are considered during plea negotiations while also allowing the judicial process to move forward without unnecessary delays. This clarification promotes both justice for victims and administrative efficiency. I also want to express my sincere appreciation to the Attorney General and his team for collaboration with the committee in strengthening this measure and for their continued commitment to supporting victims, enhancing public safety, and upholding justice. This bill was first introduced in 2020 during the 34th Guam Legislature by the--
Senator, can we, can we deal with the amendment?
Oh, I'm almost done, I'm just gonna, you know, this is my shemir on the, on the amendment. But this bill was first introduced in 2020 during the 34th Guam Legislature by the Committee on Rules on behalf of the governor. What we know today is that under the leadership of the current Attorney General of Guam has implemented the process that truly honors a crime victim's rights, victims, rights. Victims and their families are treated with dignity and respect as a law intended. So I respectfully ask my colleagues for their support in this amendment that does just that, strengthens the legislation.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, which is on page one, line 12, after response unit, it's to add the words, "or a prosecutor." So it's going to read the Attorney General's Crime Victims Response Unit, "or a prosecutor assigned to the case." Any objections to the amendment? Any, any comment? Senator Lady from Joya, ma'am, you recognize?
Thank you. I understand the intention of the amendment and the request by the Attorney General. However, there was also testimony, you know, at the hearing as to the recommendations from the National Association of Social Workers, who really are those who normally work in these capacities as victims advocates, and they seem to be suggesting that there should be social workers involved. And I think that is how it is set up right now, be so that, you know, the old system was just prosecutors and defendants. But, you know, the code now requires victims advocates, they, they require victims advocates to assist you through this process, and the testimony of NASW, you know, suggests that there are different capacities of victims to handle this type of information and that they should be treated differently, they, that there is cultural competency that is relevant, there's language barriers, there's communication to trauma-informed persons, and other things, if you look in the details. And I think that's because this is what they're exactly trained to do. They're trained to do with trauma victims, they're trained to communicate with trauma victims, they're trained to really try to ensure that trauma victims are not re-traumatized and that they're actually communicating the victims' needs. And I think if those could have been taken care of by a prosecutor, we would have never developed this whole system of victims' advocates and codified those into our systems as well. There's also a nonprofit, Vero, Victims Advocates, reaching out that I think does similar work. I'm not sure whether they overlap or whether this provision in the bill will cover all of those who do these services, but, so I'm going to just respectfully disagree with that. I think prosecutors will do that. They have to do that according to the Victims' Rights Law. They have to advise the victims of the plea agreements and what the legal implications are. But I think there should always be, and this bill as written, will ensure that a victim's advocate is also communicating with that victim as to that plea agreement so that, you know, they truly understand, or that's the goal, is to make them understand with all of the issues that they have to deal with as well.
Thank you. On the amendment, on the amendment, any senator wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator, you want to close?
Yeah, just, just shortly close on this. As was mentioned even by the author of the legislation, that they already have in place, you know, the, a response unit that oversees, as you can read in the committee report, that the victims have to be notified, the terms of plea agreement as indicated in agreements, the victim has been nullified of the terms of the plea agreement. You know, all these are, have been specified because of that, and that's why I was speaking earlier about, about the bill that was introduced by the governor in 2020. And since there, there's been many changes in the Attorney General-- And since there, there's been many changes in the Attorney General's office since then to address it. But incorporating prosecutors, the prosecutors are the ones who are assigned to the case to assist the victim, and they are in constant contact with the victim. So that's why it's important that, I mean, they, they actually help assist them too when it comes to any kind of agreements that come out or any information that is brought up. It's his, it's the prosecutor's responsibility to inform that, that victim. And as, like the author of the legislation said, it might be there, it's already, not in law, but it's already an SOP that's put in place, but now we're codifying it. So we're going to codify it, and that means that we want to make sure that this, that the prosecutor is also an individual that can be entrusted by the victim to provide any information on the case. So was that short? I think, no, it's too long, but, okay. Other than that, thank you. I ask my colleagues, please, for their support.
Thank you. On the amendment, to add the words, "or a prosecutor," to line 12, page one, so the, the Attorney General's Crime Victims' Response Unit, "or a prosecutor assigned to the case." There has been objection to the amendment. All those in favor? All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. The amendment fails. You see on the floor, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm quite taken back about that, that objection, because it's something that strengthens this, this legislation. You know, it doesn't stop anybody from moving forward on anything, notifying any kind of nonprofit organizations at all. It didn't make sense. So I ask, Mr. Speaker, to, for the body to reconsider what the Attorney General has asked us to do to strengthen this. They've been working on this since 2020 to provide a guideline of information to the victims, and it's the victims we're talking about, not the Attorney General, the victim. And if it's just, it adds one more person to notify the victim, then that's what needs to be done, I mean, not needs to be done, that should be done. It doesn't hurt anything. So I ask the body for reconsideration.
There is a motion to reconsider the actions of the body. On the motion, it's non-debatable. You agree or not? Are there any objections to motion to reconsider the actions of the body? Objection? There is an objection. All those in favor of reconsidering the actions of the body on the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the bill, Senator Parkinson, you want to close? You want to speak? Okay, you can say. General Lady from John Young, your recognition.
Sujus Masi, I just wanted to explain a little bit more. My position is, the bill's good, I like it. It's, it doesn't, it increases the number of people who have to ensure that a victim is notified of these things and a victim understands or has been, you know, given the terms of the plea agreement prior to a plea agreement being approved by the court. So this is supposed to be a right of the victim, and it's supposed to be done, but this bill actually says the courts cannot move unless there is proof that it is done. So it adds that other layer. But I think if we had put the word prosecutor in here, we would have reduced the number of people that have to talk to the victim or ensure that the victim understands this versus increasing it as the, as the bill does. And I think, you know, if we're talking about victims, it's, it's not for the convenience of the prosecutor necessarily, although they shouldn't hold them up that much if, if they have done what they're supposed to do by assigning a victim's advocate to these victims early on and work with them throughout the case. So by the time they get to plea agreement, these victim's advocates should, should be able to do these things, contact these people in addition to the prosecutor, because the victim's bill of rights still requires a prosecutor to talk to those victims and explain things. But so this bill, as written, I support because it will just increase by one more the people who talk to those victims before the court orders that are considered as a plea agreement. And just, you know, since I was a senator, I'm surprised that there are still complaints from victims about, you know, they weren't being notified. I remember the former Attorney General came up with this electronic notification system for victims of, of any movement, when they're going to go to court hearing, that type of thing. And so that was a big thing. But I, I do agree with the social workers that this is one time, and we have recognized this again and again by recognizing victim's advocates, that we just need someone else who's not a prosecutor, a lawyer, someone else who's trained to talk to victims, especially those with trauma, and to make sure that they are a little bit more taken care of in this system. So I, I support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other senator willing to speak on the bill? Any other senator willing to speak on the bill? Senator Parkinson, you can close on your bill, officer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I thank my colleagues for the discussion on this bill. I know it's a very late evening, and so I'm going to keep this in short. And so at this time, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to move Bill 106-38, an act to amend subsection B of 60.8, Chapter 60, Title 8 of the Guam Code annotated, relative to prohibiting plea deals without reasonable proof of victim notification, to the third reading file for voting.
As amended in committee.
As amended on the floor.
On the motion to build, send Bill 106-38-COR as amended in committee to the third reading. Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Colleagues, we have these four more bills, so we can get through this by tomorrow. We need to finish everything by tomorrow before lunch, so that we can, so that we can vote on Thursday. All right? Because Friday is going to be, Friday, this places for the organic act, and we need to give our staff time enough to be able to prepare for the halls. Okay? So with that, we'll be in recess until 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. We're in recess.